Regular monthly meeting of the Board of Supervisors for October 27, 2020. We'll start out by doing a roll call. We'll do it in our normal process. Chief, you want to lead us off?
Brendan Pasquale, Chief of Police.
Jim Sullivan, Director of Engineering Services.
Dave Chris, Director of Finance.
Jeff Winterbottom, Assistant Manager.
Bob Hart, Township Manager.
Sean Killkenny, Solicitor.
Amanda Capaletti, Vice Chair.
Ashley DePiero, Supervisor.
Joe Givanas, Supervisor.
And Kevin McDevitt, Chairman of the Board. Okay, the first item on the agenda is to announce that we met in executive session to go over possible litigation and personnel issues. I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for September 22, 2020. Are there any questions or any concerns on the minutes? None being, I'd like to get a second.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you Supervisor DePiero, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is the financial reports for September 2020. I'd like to make a form of a motion to approve the financial reports. There any questions or concerns on the financial reports? None being, I'd like to get a second.
I'll second.
Thank you Supervisor Givanas, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is the township reports. I'd like to get a motion to approve that township reports. Do I have a second? Thank you Chairwoman Capaletti. And I forgot to ask, is there any questions on the township reports or any concerns before we approve or disapprove? Are there any questions? None being, I'd like to approve them, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion carries. Next item on the agenda is citizens to be heard. Mr. Chris, are there any emails for citizens to be heard?
Mr. Chairman, there are no emails in the info@eastnorritontownship email box.
Okay, thank you. Next item is comments from the Board of Supervisors. Does anybody have any comments for the meeting?
A quick comment. It's in regards to the trunk retreat that we just held, East Norton just held. Just wanted to really commend all the staff, including Parks and Rec for putting this all together and Bob Hart for putting this all together. It was so fun. My kids were amazed. And the line, I don't know if anybody saw it, but the line was like all the way down Stamford Street, all the way down to Germantown Pike. So, I don't know, I think it was just great for East Norton to kind of think outside the box. It's not the way we wanted to do it, obviously, but I think they came together so well. And I'm just really thankful for our township for doing that and just needed to say that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'll piggyback off of that. I attended as well and got to help hand out some candy. I want to thank the police department for their part in it. You guys were so much fun to hang out with that night. The kids loved it, very excited to see the police officers there giving out the candy, just very engaging. Everybody that came through had nothing but wonderful things to say. So, thank you to the township staff that really went above and beyond in putting something like that together. Just the creativity and thinking about how to continue to serve and engage our community in such a positive way. So, it was amazing and thank you. It's a privilege to work with you all.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I wasn't there, but I saw the highlights on Facebook and I wish I was there. I'll keep my usual comment about, you know, it was a nice affair, it was a way to get kids and families out and be safe and social distance. And I think it was a great night all around. And kudos to the township for pulling it off, for the staff and Mr. Hart. And I think it was a great, great event.
Yes. Yeah, and I have to say, Bob, in these troubling times, I mean, I think the township has come up with ingenious ways to continue to help the residents or entertain their, you know, bring some joy with the, I know you've done, you still do the shredding event with a little bit of a twist and you had some other events that you've done. And now this with the trunk retreat, I mean, it's just, it's great the way you continue to look for ways to try to keep the residents involved with the township. Okay, so there is no old business. So, I'd like to bring up the new business, which would be the first item on new business is the 2020 Road Program Change Order. I'd like to call on Mr. Sullivan to review this item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. It is labeled as change order number one, but this is a closeout change order. This project is complete. We think it came out very well. There were a lot of issues during the project, unforeseen conditions when we started digging up the road, we hit a couple of water mains, we didn't hit them, they were in the way. So, we changed some pipe sizes. The first page shows that there was additional $54,286 in kind of pipe work and some curb work. Then there was all the reductions based on the measured quantities during the project. And then the third item is all the things that go along with contract work where we needed test pits to find out what was underneath the street so we didn't run into water mains, gas mains, anything like that. The good news is, all this comes out to an addition of $8,786.37, which is a big, good news outcome for the township. It's about a 1% overage on what the bid was. We consider a very successful program and we think the contractors, contractors who have an office in East Norton did a very good job.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Sullivan? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the change order number, would be that a closeout or a change order? How would that?
Change order number one is fine, Mr. Chairman. That's what you should call it.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the change order number one. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Thank you Chairwoman Capaletti. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is the Resolution Number 2817, Signature Authority for the Basin Maintenance Agreement. Again, I'd like to call on Mr. Sullivan.
Okay, this is interesting. In 2012, during the preliminary design of the DeKalb Pike Route 202 reconstruction project that will commence fairly soon, apparently, in East Norton, the township agreed to take ownership maintenance responsibility for a very small underground detention basin actually located at the corner of Germantown and DeKalb. To that end, they have an agreement that we have to sign that says we will maintain the basin properly. And this resolution is for signature authority so the Township Manager and the Chairman of the Board can sign that agreement.
Okay. Are there any questions on the resolution? I just have one, Mr. Sullivan, and this is kind of highly unusual, isn't it?
Well, I found it to be somewhat unusual. It is a very small basin, so it's not going to be a big problem for the township in perpetuity, but it's not something that I have seen in the past, most likely.
Right. And this was done by, I guess, a past administration?
Yes. Yeah, no one involved in this was here when this happened.
Okay. All right, well, I guess, I guess it's something we have to do since we've already committed.
Chairman, add for a second. When I went through some of the documentation, this was literally, first discussions were 10 years ago. It is just the maintenance of the, it's not the creation of it, it is truly just the maintenance, which a very minor occurrence. But as Mr. Sullivan said, it's unusual to some degree because it's not, this isn't something you see a lot, but then again, you don't see necessarily basins right along a major thoroughfare like this. As you know, this project, the 202 project has been on the shelf waiting to go for 20 years.
Yeah.
We're finally there. And I have to assume that 10 years ago, when the township, who was here, who were here at the township and discussing this, considered it to be a minor event or a minor issue of the maintenance part of it and figured they would just do that with some of the other concessions that were granted at the time that the township did not have to do. So, that's kind of some of the background, but we don't expect it to be any major and for our staff to do.
Okay. It's just kind of a nuisance item, I imagine.
You got to remember.
All right, I'd like to make a motion then to approve Resolution Number 2817, Signature Authority for the Basin Maintenance Agreement. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you Supervisor DePiero, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2818, 3018 Whitehall Road, Planning Module Approval. Mr. Sullivan, can you enlighten us on this resolution?
I will try to do that. Last meeting, the subdivision of 3018 Whitehall Road was approved by the Board of Supervisors. It is one lot turned into three. So, we have two new lots that have to be served by public sewer. That requires a planning module to be approved by the DEP. This resolution allows them to submit that to DEP and shows that the township is aware of it and has approved the subdivision.
Okay.
It's very simple, we've done this a couple of times before, so.
Right. Any questions for Mr. Sullivan on this resolution? All right, none being, I'd like to approve Resolution Number 2818, 3018 Whitehall Road, Planning Module Approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Supervisor Givanas, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2819, 2311 Old Arch Road. Again, Mr. Sullivan, would you review this item?
Yeah, what I'll do is introduce this item and Mr. Chris, Robert Wagner and Rick Mast should be the people who are going to do the actual presentation here.
Okay.
But this is, this property, if you remember last year, was rezoned from AR to CR to allow the construction of townhomes. Forty townhomes are proposed on this property, the old Gospel Highway property. All of our review letters have been addressed mostly to the satisfaction of our consultants and myself. There is an approval resolution ready for your consideration this evening. So, with that, I will let the applicant make his presentation.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rick Mast. I'm the engineer that prepared the plan and Robert Wagner, the applicant, is also with me and on video. And as Mr. Sullivan said, the plan is more or less the same configuration that you may remember seeing about a little more than a year, a year and a half ago. It involves the removal of all the existing structures that are on the property, the small office building, parking lot, and three tall radio towers that are there. And it's the construction of 40 new townhomes on individual lots and a private cul-de-sac street. All of the interior facilities, the roadway, the storm sewer inside the development, our two fire retention basins will be owned and maintained by a homeowners association of the 40 lots. It will be served, obviously, with public water and public sewer. The width of our proposed street is 26 feet from curb to curb, within a 40-foot right-of-way, which does match the Penns Crossing development that surrounds us. Through this development process, we did quite a bit of consultation with the homeowners association of Penns Crossing behind us with regard to how we manage stormwater management and connection to their stormwater management system. We did negotiate an easement for that connection with them and they would only resolve to enter into that agreement after they were satisfied with our design. That's a quick summary of the project. I'd be happy to answer any questions or to review any of the waiver requests if you would like me to.
Is there any questions? Okay, doesn't seem like anybody has any questions. I do recall this last year when you brought it up. And I guess the one, the one issue was the height. Did we kind of get that settled with Penn Crossing?
The height of the units?
Yeah.
Themselves? Yeah, I believe we're settled on that. There, we are within what is now the height limitations of the CR district.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, the waivers that they are requesting are fairly basic and neither the township engineer nor myself have any objections to your granting these waivers.
Okay.
One of them includes considering this a preliminary final land development approval.
All right, well, if we, if no one else has any questions, Mr. Hart, the, all the township staff has gone over this and everything's been met as far as legally on this.
Yes, and they've agreed, and they've agreed to, you know, Jim's letters and everything's been worked out. And I'll give you an example of some of the waivers that are, were very minor. Along, along the property line, there are some existing trees. Like, one of the waivers is to allow those existing trees to be part of the buffer as opposed to taking them down and putting up, you know, another buffer. So, they're all, they're very typical minor things that go along with these types of developments. And as you recall, when this property was discussed in the past, over a year ago, there was initial talk of, you know, potential office building that was allowed, that was, you know, able to go there and all those types of uses. And at the end of the day, with a lot of hard work and a very reasonable and conscientious property owner developer, I think we've come together with a successful plan that is sensitive to the surrounding neighborhoods and developments and is, and basically handles all the, from the stormwater to everything else. We've looked into that. So, we think we have a successful project moving along.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, Chair McDevitt, if the board was so inclined to approve this resolution, it would be a motion to approve the resolution and all the waivers, just so it's clear for the record.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up because that wasn't on my notes here. All right, I'd like to make a motion then to approve the Resolution Number 2819, 2311 Old Arch Road with all the amendments that go with it. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you Supervisor DePiero, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, good evening.
Okay.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is Number 2820, and that would be 10 and 14 East Germantown Pike, the Wawa. Again, I'd like to call on Mr. Sullivan to review this plan.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Again, I'll introduce this project. If you remember, a special exception earlier this year was granted by the zoning hearing board to allow a convenience store with gasoline station. This has now become, something wrong with my video, there I am, all right. It's a Wawa, so that's, we talk about it generally, it's a convenience store or gasoline station, but this is the case, it's going to be a Wawa located at 10 and 14 West Germantown Pike, the old Ray's Diner and Malt Shop and the current Norris Town Car Wash. I think at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kaplan to do his presentation. And Mr. Chris, he also has Joe Barron, Greg Richardson, and then members, interested members of the committee are Mr. Tornetta J. and Mr. Michael Tornetta.
Chair McDevitt, did you just want to clear up that there are any additional people that wanted to comment?
Yes, and I was just going to say that before we start with Mr. Kaplan is we are allowing the neighboring property owner to come on and make a comment. And we're also saying that any other people that are in the meeting quarry can email Mr. Chris if they want to make a comment on this particular project. So, that's my public safety here.
And Mr. Chairman, they can email to info@eastnorritontwp.org.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Kaplan, then we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. McDevitt. So, we all remember Ray's Diner. My clients owned that property for years. Couple of years ago, we came in with a Wawa with gas, limited to the Ray's Diner property. We went to the zoning hearing board for a special exception. We satisfied all of their requirements except.
Turn on the video, you are unmuted, it says. Start my video. I'm going to start.
Jay, please.
All right.
We complied with every requirement except the location of an underground fuel tank in a side yard. We came back with a revised plan, again, leaving the property, using only the Ray's Diner property. We obtained a special exception from the zoning hearing board. That plan would have required a number of waivers, particularly with regard to the width of the side yards and planting strips. So, my client made a decision to acquire by partnership the car wash property, and therefore we have 10 and 14. We made a third trip to the zoning hearing board and we received a special exception. We submitted our land development plans. We received reviews. We revised the plans. The review letters are about as clean as any I've ever seen. There are no zoning issues. We are asking for one waiver, which I'm not even sure is a waiver, and that is that you approve this plan as a preliminary slash final. All of the final plan requirements have been met. We have review letters from the township engineer. We have a review letter also from the township engineer, I believe, on traffic. We have a review letter from the township's sewer engineer. And there are very, very few items that are comments. If you go through the, all of the review letters, you'll see that virtually everything is marked as satisfied. There are a small number of items, very small items, that the engineers have asked us to incorporate in the plan. They are set forth in the resolution and we are, we will accept all those conditions and we will fulfill them to the extent they can be fulfilled before the plans will be filed. As I said, the only waiver modification is that you approve this as a preliminary slash final plan. Among the conditions are that we go back to Montgomery County Road and Bridge and either update our highway occupancy permit or obtain a new highway occupancy permit. And we will do that. We have, I think we have demonstrated in our presentations how the ingress and the egress to the property will be met. We have a 20-foot easement along the back part of the property that was acquired when my client bought the property that creates a accessway out to DeKalb Pike. We are making no changes to that. The only changes that will be made will be made by PennDOT when it widens to Calpike. We have agreed to, to sign up to prohibit trucks from using that and we will abide by that. Joe, I don't know who's running the Zoom, but Joe Barron, our engineer, is here and he has on his computer the site plan. If the board would like Joe to walk through that site plan so that you get a description of what is to be constructed.
Yes, I'd like to. I think that should be done.
Yeah, I do too. So, Joe, where are you?
I'm here.
Okay. Can whoever is controlling it give Joe the ability to screen, to share the screen?
Yep, just one minute, please. Does everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, just to hit the highlights of the plan here, the access points off of Germantown Pike are the existing access points that are out there today for Ray's Diner. This one here on the right side is a right-in, right-out, left-in, the left turn lane here. And then this one here on the left is a right-in, right-out, but like I said, those are existing today. We're making some minor radius improvements to them, but otherwise, they are remaining in the exact locations that they are today. As Mr. Kaplan had mentioned, right now, the way that the existing site is set up, there's no real channelization going on from Ray's Diner into this 20-foot access easement. So, you can see how we're restricting this to just one point of access to that easement here. That would be an extension of the drive aisle between the canopy and the store. This convenience store is a 5,051-square-foot convenience store. See the trash enclosure in the back, the loading area in the back, parking on the sides in the front. And here, this area here would be the canopy with eight multi-product dispensers that allow for 16 fueling positions. The area right below the canopy here is the three underground storage tanks they have. And then right next to the underground storage tanks, there are two parking spaces for air pumps. The rest of the site, there's 48 parking spaces serving the rest of the site to serve the store. You can see the various buffering along the side, rear, and the front property lines. As Mr. Kaplan mentioned, we're not requesting any waivers for that buffering, so we're providing the ordinance-required buffering. We are going to be modifying the sidewalk to have the grassed area between the curb and the sidewalk as required by the ordinance along Germantown Pike and then providing sidewalk and crosswalks to the sidewalk around the building for someone to be able to walk from Germantown Pike and into, and get into the Wawa Convenience Store. Beyond that, the typical Wawa site lighting proposed throughout the parking area and under the canopy. And we are providing underground stormwater management basins. There's one kind of in an L shape here behind and on the Germantown Pike side of the store. And then there's another one kind of L-shaped here around the canopy. Both of those basins would collect and discharge into the storm sewer infrastructure within Germantown Pike. So, those are the, kind of the highlights of the plan. If there's anything else you would like me to go through with the plan, but it kind of covers the existing site and the proposed site, sorry.
Any supervisors have any questions?
I have one question for Mr. Barron. The signage.
The signage, I take it it's the entrance there of Germantown Pike designed to advertise the gasoline prices?
As part of this plan, we have notes that any signage would be permitted separately. So the approval of this plan does not include approval of signage at this time.
Okay, so that's not on the plan here then at this point?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I guess at this point in the presentation, we could probably open it up to some comments. Mr. Chris, do you have, other than Jay? Mr. Tornetta, do you have any other people that are emailed you?
We've not received any emails.
Okay, well, I guess we can allow Mr. Tornetta to talk about this, this project. Maybe we can take down the.
Am I on?
Yes, sir.
Am I unmuted? Okay, first of all, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak to everyone tonight. You know, I have great respect for this board and also for the planning commission in East Norton, but I'm going to be pretty strong with my words and my statements this evening. As everybody knows, my family's been involved in this project for probably the last seven or eight years when the applicant developer sued our family claiming that they had an automatic right to bring all their traffic through Norhtown Shopping Center to, you know, in order to accomplish their personal goals for this development. We were successful defending ourselves, very frankly, at all levels of the court, all the way up to the Supreme Court on this thing. As I've said many times before, I'm not against Wawa developing on their site on Germantown Pike as long as they don't create any hardship or any difficult positions for myself as the neighbor or any of our neighbors. And since this most recent plan has been submitted, I've been diligently asking at all the meetings for an explanation of the traffic flow on the 20-foot easement that is my property, the Norhtown Shopping Center property. We've yet to get a commitment, one way or the other, and again, in our presentation tonight, I don't believe Mr. Barron or Mr. Kaplan made a representation whether it was one-way or two-way traffic, unless I misunderstood. So, you know, I think they're specifically asking for two-way traffic on the 20-foot easement. And as everybody knows, the township regulations calls for a 24-foot-wide two-way traffic. And I know Mr. Kaplan's going to make arguments about they've had opportunities, or it's grandfathered, or dominant servient tenant, and all this other kind of thing. But very frankly, the township has regulations calling for 24-foot-wide two-way traffic. And, and, you know, I don't want to argue with Mr. Kaplan this evening, but I spent 18 years with East Norton Township finalizing the condemnation of Route 202, and very frankly, I'm the last property to be resolved. And as part of that resolution with PennDOT, in the last three months, I have language and have discussed with PennDOT that there will be no changes at the 20-foot easement that would create any radius changes into that, into our property. So I would, I formally want to make and go on public record that I'm opposed to any waivers or any changes in the law that would affect my real estate as the title property owner. And in the event a situation comes about where two-way traffic is going to be permitted on my 20-foot easement, on my real estate in lieu of the 24 feet that's called for under your ordinance, then I believe it creates a situation where there could be a potential safety situation and a higher probability of injury or damage. So not only am I formally opposed to having two-way traffic on a 20-foot easement, but in the event the township's going to let that happen, I am going to vigorously pursue an indemnity from the developer, Wawa, and East Norton Township to, if they're going to approve this negligent design. And as we all know, in case there's an incident because of that approval, the first person they're going to look to sue is the title property owner, which is me. Okay, and I believe allowing this situation outside of what your ordinance creates, very frankly, is, is not the appropriate thing to do. And I'll be honest with you, I don't believe it's in the right spirit for the applicant to even ask to do this kind of thing. However, with my experience, it doesn't surprise me. So, you know, very frankly, I reserve all my rights to oppose any decisions that are either made this evening or in the future about the 20-foot easement that would increase my family's exposure as the owner of Norhtown Plaza, who will end up becoming a defendant in the lawsuit as the owner of the ground. And I have to tell everybody, I want to apologize to this board tonight, okay, for the sternness of my comments. But this is a very, very, very critical issue, not only for me, but for the township. So I want to thank you for your careful consideration. I appreciate you listening to me. And again, my apologies for my sternness, but I believe that this is a very critical issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tornetta. Mr. Hart, I wonder if you could make some comments on this, and also our solicitor, Mr. Kilkenny.
Bob, you're muted.
You're muted, Bob.
Sorry. I did note maybe Mr. Kaplan or Mr. Barron have a comment or care to comment on this issue?
Yeah, Bob, I'm not going to fight with my friend Jay. We've been friends for 40 years. We have a difference of opinion. We have a difference of opinion here. There are two comments that I will make. To the extent that Jay is saying that my client is violating some contractual right under the easement agreement, then that's not before this board. I'm sure that Sean will tell you that there are case after case. I just won one in Chester County on an easement similar where the owner of the servient tenement, as Jay has called his property, objected to a similar road. And the law is that if Jay, as the owner of the property, has some objection to the way we're using the property in violation of his easement document, he doesn't come to the township and ask the board of supervisors to be the judge of some dispute between two landowners. So to the extent that Jay's comments were in that vein, I don't really think that you should be involved in it. With regard to the easement and how it will be used, the easement's been there for as long as I can remember. It has served as an access way to certainly Ray's Diner. And I believe the car wash, I used it many times myself over the years. So it's not restricted now. It hasn't been restricted as to one-way or two-way. And therefore, it's, if it violates something, which I don't believe it does, it's a non-conforming dimensional situation and is able to remain that way. I believe that that is also the position of the township zoning officer and the engineers. What we were asked to do, and makes sense, is to prohibit trucks from using that access, certainly on the way out. A truck going out will have to make a turn onto 202. 202 is not finished yet. I'm not quite sure what the ultimate configuration will be. But it makes sense to us not to have trucks exit the property going to, basically, north on DeKalb Pike by making a right out and heading across the intersection. So to the extent that there was some aspect of the use of the access easement that might cause a problem, the township flagged it, and we've agreed to it. So I understand that there is considerable amount of emotion involved in this. The two property owners do not get along. They were in a court battle. That court battle was resolved, and Mr. Tornetta has got his Jersey barriers up so that cars cannot use that access, I believe, to gain access or to get out of his center. But that's Jay's and Charlie's choice. We don't control that. So I'm sorry that my friend is so upset, but I also have a client that's been trying to improve this property for a long time. He's gone out and acquired an additional property, obviously an income-producing property, and combined them so that there would be no violations of the zoning ordinance nor waivers requested. So we have a absolutely clean plan, and we ask that you approve it tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, can I respond to that?
Sure you can.
So Mr. Kaplan's first point is not on point, because that's not what I was talking about. So you can disregard that. And number two, I don't believe at any meeting that I heard that the township has actually asked to two-way traffic on a 20-foot right-of-way when their ordinance calls for 24 feet. If I'm mistaken, I would appreciate somebody telling me that tonight.
Jim, have you heard me, this is Sean Kilkenny, have you heard anything from Russ Banner, our traffic engineer, on this issue?
There was a comment in the review letter that, you know, the traffic report done by the applicant shows very minimal traffic going out that way. And they'd even done reports where they didn't use that easement at all. Other than that, to us, to the engineers, it's an existing condition.
Mr. Solicitor. Solicitor, this is Bob. Though I agree that, you know, two property owners, abutting property owners, adjoining property owners may have some disputes between them that are, that do not involve the township. My concern in this, was brought up earlier, is liability. And that's what I think is important from the township perspective. You heard the comments by both sides in this. I don't know if you have the answer, Mr. Solicitor, now, or you need to look into it, but I think that, from a township perspective, the liability is the biggest concern.
No, I agree, Bob, and I don't doubt what Mr. Kaplan's saying is true. Deal with him in many venues, and he's often correct on the law when I deal with Mr. Kaplan, sometimes adverse to what my clients want. So I do think maybe the safest thing for the board would be is that Mr. Tornetta could write Mr. Hart, the, you know, put in writing his concerns. Mr. Tornetta, Mr. Kaplan can share with me the case law that he has from Chester County and some other places. We will evaluate it and could, back to the board, you know, we'll also talk to Divid, I assume, our insurance carrier, just because litigation was raised, and we could have an answer for you. Of course, we can always get sued. Every township can always get sued. That's not an issue. But if the board is concerned with this, or Mr. Hart's concerned with this, we could have an answer for you by the next meeting shortly.
Hi, Sean, I have, I have a solution for this.
All right.
I have a solution for this. First of all, I believe that under the Municipal Tort Claims Act, you're immune from any kind of liability for approving this plan. That's what Jay is saying, that somehow there's some liability that you will incur if there's an accident merely because you approved the plan. That's, that's the law. I'll give you the practical solution. We're going to sign a development agreement, Sean, and there's always an indemnification in the development agreement, usually with, at least with regard to indemnification if the township gets sued for stormwater. We are going to have insurance that will cover any of these claims that Jay is conjuring up. So the simple answer is that my client will indemnify the township and defend the township, and we'll get insurance, and we'll name you as an insured, Sean, even though I don't think you can conceivably have any legal liability. But we'd like to put this to bed tonight, and if that's Bob's concern, Bob, that ought to do it for you. We're going to get you the same coverage that we will have, and we'll name you as an insured on our policy. And we are going to record whatever you want to record. We'll, we'll probably record the development agreement, Sean, so.
So folks, I, you know, I'd like to respond again, and that's all fine for Mr. Kaplan's perspective. He's very good at what he does. But the point is, is he's making certain representations to you about grandfathering and things like that. And I would recommend to you that the township protects their own interest, that they approved something that the applicant's attorney has made certain representations about whether that is truly the law or not. So, and again, folks, you know my position with East Norton Township, and I'm not here to play any problems. Sure.
Thank you. I think I'd like to go more with what our solicitor suggested for a couple of reasons. I'm a very visual person, and I had walked my camera today to really understand what's going on here and what the issues are from both sides. I'd like an opportunity to really be able to drop by the township building one day and look at the schemes and really kind of understand both sides of the argument from a visual perspective, because I think that that works best for me before I make a decision like this that, you know, has a lot of impact. I think Mr. Kilkenny has also brought up, you know, some good points about being able to make sure we have our facts straight and conclusively in terms of the law that's applicable here. So I just think that, for me personally, that I think that that might be the best way to go. I personally think that that's, that's going to give us, I apologize if it may not get resolved this evening, but I just want to make sure that my decision, and I hopefully my fellow board members, you know, can, can understand that my decision, I would like to make sure I know exactly what's going on, and I'm a very visual person.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I can say something, we put visuals out there for you. So I think what would be important is you should go out and we put poles and chains up to show you exactly where the 20-foot would be. But I have to tell you, it actually. But I have to tell you, it actually would extend further than that out to 202, but I didn't want to create an unsafe situation to show you exactly how far out it goes, allowing in two-way traffic in and out. So visuals, you know, we're happy to meet you out there, but we try to provide a quasi-visual for you, but you have to understand it would extend even further straight out to 202, perpendicular.
Well, if I could.
Hold on, one at a time. Chairwoman Capaletti, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. And I understand what you're saying, Mr. Tornetta. I'm not saying we need to go out and physically see it. I'd like an opportunity to see the drawings that we have, to see it kind of more in person than what I have on my screen here. When it's more tangible to me, sometimes technology is great in a lot of ways, but for me, certain things being a bit more tangible make it a little more concrete, make a little more sense to me. And if, before I make a decision on all of this, I just feel like to owe respect to the Tornettas who have done a lot of great business in our Township as well as to Mr. Kaplan and his client whom he's serving well here, I just feel like I need to be able to make a good decision to really sit down and look at the drawings and sit down with perhaps people who are perhaps a bit more impartial about it that know both the arguments on both sides. So, you know, if there's a day that I can sit down with, you know, Chairman McDebit or Mr. Hart or Mr. Kilkeny, then I would like to be able to go do that and make that decision.
Yeah, and I do think Ms. Capaletti, I definitely, you know, I don't think this would take an extremely long period of time. I think, you know, Mr. Kaplan and Mr. Tornetta could provide their correspondence, say, to the Township by November 6th as to their, as to what their positions are related to this issue, and we'll review it and meet with any board members that may have any questions. And, you know, it's always Mr. McDebit's call. We can put this back on the agenda in our November meeting and the board then can make an informed decision.
Thank you, Mr. Kilkeny.
And FYI, we have an early meeting this November. It's really only three weeks away.
Three weeks from now, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's all, that's fine. What I would like to do is I would like to ask Joe to bring the drawing back up so that we can just show what we're talking about and everybody can see it now. And if Supervisor Capaletti wants to have that meeting, we'll be glad to be there. But I just think that it's worthwhile that you see it. Joe, can you blow up the top of it? Yeah, but you gotta, do you have it where it goes all the way out to 202?
Yeah, here, it does, right here. You're not seeing that.
Can't see that.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Is that better?
Yeah, I believe so. So take your pointer and show this 20-foot easement.
20-foot easement here runs along this entire rear property line and then continues out here to 202. Here's where it meets up with 202.
Runs all the way, runs all the way out to the street. It's been there for, I want to say, forever. The deed to the Ray's Diner property contains the easement. There is, there is no question that that easement has been used for years and years and years for both ingress and egress to Ray's Diner. It's an existing use.
No, and I understand that, Mr. Kaplan, and I don't doubt you're wrong. I would just like to double-check. And, you know, I'd be interested to do if Mr. Tornetta or someone else filed a mandamus action against the Township, asking us about that two-way access and the 20 or 24-foot issue and how you think that would come out. That would be very helpful to me in my office.
I'm sorry, say that again, Sean.
I, like I said, I don't doubt you maybe correctly that at Chester County case and all such, as I know my dealings with you for almost close to two decades now, you're often accurate, almost always accurate on the law. What I'm interested in is, say, Mr. Tornetta, as he's raised this two-way access on, and the 24 feet as opposed to the 20 feet, which was what is needed by a Township ordinance, what would happen if, say, Mr. Tornetta files a mandamus action against the Township saying, hey Township, start enforcing that portion of your ordinance and kind of how the case law falls out on that?
Well, I don't think he gets to file a mandamus action if he thinks that it's a violation of either your zoning ordinance or your subdivision ordinance. Exclusive remedy is under the MPC and he's got to give notice and he's got to do all of that. And then if he thinks that we are doing something wrong and you don't enforce it, then he can sue us.
No, no, and I understand that and I do generally agree here now, this is under the Torque Claims Act. But obviously, I have to advise this board, I want to make sure they're aware of all the existing options before they make an informed vote. Like I said, I may be wrong, I'm not speaking for the board, but if you have everything to me and I'm giving a deadline by the 6th, you know, 10 days from now, we can have analysis done, provide to the board, provide for questions from myself, Mr. Sullivan, and, you know, Russ Benner, and the board could be informed before their November meeting on, before they take action.
That's fine, but I have this one request, Sean. I am not sure exactly what Jay is saying, except that he's afraid there's going to be an accident. We've had this reviewed, he's seen all the review letters, he's filed absolutely nothing. So he's here complaining. Let him, give him some time to file whatever it is and then let me respond. I really don't think that I have to guess what he's complaining about.
No, I mean, that's fine. Jay, if you could put an email into Bob Hart as to what your concerns are as soon as possible and then we'll share that with Mr. Kaplan. And if you could do that by the end of this week, that would be great.
It's not going to happen by the end of this week because I'm going to have to engage my counsel to do this, who has to go do all their case and homework, and I can't expect in all due conscience to ask somebody to stop everything else they're doing and get something done on a legal matter in a day and a half. So I think that's unreasonable. I think your proposal of everybody getting something out by November 6th, we will do our best efforts. I want to make sure that the board is aware of something because, again, they don't necessarily get all of the facts. If you still feel this is a very safe condition, you need to know that the AT&amp;T property, which is the property immediately adjacent to the car wash property where it says Premises A, has no rights onto the easement. So that easement will only always be 20 feet there and could be no greater. Likewise, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania property, which is the Hess gas station for anybody as old as me that remembers what used to be there, okay, has no rights on the easement only. So if you visually go out and look at this thing where people have shortcutted a radius on my property over a period of time to make that entrance way wider, it's going to be narrower. It's going to be 20 feet. And that's what I want to make sure visually, excuse me, everybody understands. And then if you believe that's a safe condition, you act accordingly. I think the facts are very important here. I appreciate the opportunity to respond legally, but I need to turn that over to my counsel or team of counsel. I don't profess myself to be an attorney and I'm not going to make a legal representation on certain issues that Mr. Kaplan would like me to do that this evening.
So, Mr. Tornetta, if you could.
And he knows I'm not going to do that.
So, Mr. Tornetta, if you could have that, if you could have that, you know, your position by the 6th, as you said, you would try your best to have done, that would be greatly appreciated. Please DC Mr. Kaplan on that correspondence or all forward to him or Bob. And, you know, and so Mr. Kaplan or anyone could have the ability to respond.
When did Bob say the November meeting was, Sean?
Bob, when's the November meeting?
I think it's the 17th.
17th.
Okay. If Jay gets his material in by the 6th, we'll respond as quickly as we can and certainly before the 6th.
Yeah, I can have it researched, give the, after I do my research, have the supervisors opportunity to have any questions, and then they can make an informed decision, hopefully in their November meeting if they're satisfied.
So I have one last question.
Yes.
Does it make any sense that since this is an easement, that the Township would require indemnification to me as the property owner?
How can it do that? You have a contract right.
We'll figure it out.
No, we're not going to figure it out, Jay. You have whatever right you have under your contract, under your easement. You've created a firestorm here to try and scare the Township.
I'm not scaring anybody.
Excuse me.
Okay, let's not argue here, gentlemen. Look forward to your correspondence.
I'm not arguing. I appreciate the opportunity to talk tonight, that's all, and I appreciate everybody's patience with our comments this evening.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to make a motion to table this item until the November meeting on advice by counsel. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tornetta.
Okay, thank you. So again, we have a motion to table the item until November meeting. I have a second by Chairwoman Capaletti. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight and giving us your information. Okay, we'll move on to the next item then is Resolution Number 2821, the Pico Green Region Open Space Program. Again, I'd like to call on Mr. Sullivan to review this.
Okay, this one should be a little bit easier than the last one. Pico has a Green Region grant that's open right now and we need to apply for that by the end of the month, October 31st. It's a $10,000 grant with a $10,000 match. What it's used for is any kind of passive recreation improvements to a park. We plan to use this grant. If we're successful to get it, we'll use it for improvements to Stan Ridge Park.
Okay.
Whether it's moving the playground equipment to another location or just general landscaping around our proposed building that someday we may be able to build.
Chairman, this in particular, we typically don't go for grants with a 50% match, but we know we have money set aside in the budget to make improvements. So this is a no-brainer from that respect.
No, no, definitely, because I know that was one of the items we want to start working on is improving some of our parks and if we can get $10,000 towards that, that would be fantastic. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve this item. Are there any questions on the motion? Okay, do I have someone who'd like to make a motion?
Put that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Givanas, do I have a second?
Let's take that motion.
Thank you, Supervisor DePiro. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is the East Norton Township Preliminary 2021 Budget Presentation. And I'd like to call on Mr. Chris to review this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You should see on your screen the presentation for the 2021 preliminary budget in just a Screen sharing, but it's taking a little time to come up, so just give me one minute.
Great.
You can take a little rest. Okay. So just by way of giving you a recap of where we stand right now, so tonight we're doing our initial budget presentation. This is for the preliminary budget and the purpose of tonight's meeting is, after this review, is to ask the board for authorized authorization to advertise the proposed budget. Following that, we'll be meeting with department heads over the next couple of weeks. The goal then is to present a second budget presentation to the board at the November 17th meeting. And then following that meeting, we'll continue working with departments to get the budget into an acceptable form for the board and have it presented for the approval at the December 8th board meeting. So again, tonight's the initial budget presentation. We'll do a second one at the November 17th meeting. The goal being to have a budget that the board can adopt at the December 8th for their supervisors' meeting. And each year when we start our budget, we follow four different guidelines and each, that each department follows as well. One is labeled stewardship, and this is where we work diligently to make sure that we're preserving and enhancing the assets of the Township. We also work diligently on maintaining the integrity of our process. We want to make sure that we're strengthening as much as possible the public trust that the residents have in the Township and in the budget process that we follow. The third guideline is respect. We want to make sure that we treat everybody who comes in contact with the Township with respect and all of our processes and all of our procedures are geared towards that. And then finally, I need to move this out of the way, cooperation. You know, we worked diligently with our residents and our businesses to work to create a better Township. And these are the guidelines that we follow when we start the budget process. Now, we also have a series of budget goals that we establish at the start of the budget season. One is, our goal is always to work towards a no-tax increase for our residents. The second goal we strive towards is to make minimal use of our savings accounts in order to balance the budget. In other words, we've got some rainy day monies that have been set aside over the years and try to minimize the use of that to balance the budget and work instead on minimizing our expenditures. We always, as part of our budget goal, work to be good stewards of the financial resources. We don't take it lightly, the fact that our businesses pay business privilege tax or that our residents pay their income tax or property taxes. We take it very seriously and we like to make sure, want to make sure that we're big stewards of the faith that they placed in us to maintain those financial resources. And then finally, part of our budget goal is to make sure that we're constantly enhancing the Township for its residents and for the visitors who come through the Township. So those are the four goals that we work towards when we start the budget. Now, before we get into the actual 2021 budget numbers that we'll be asking the advertising authorization, we always like to take a quick minute and go through the current year highlights. So our 2020 highlights, believe it or not, in the year of COVID where things were going, and a lot of situations going so wrong and creating so much havoc for the Township and our residents, there was actually a lot of good stuff that ended up happening in 2020 for the Township. In the building front area, we had a new building that went up at 21 Campus Drive, I think it's actually Campus Lane. The bentwood apartments were completed and occupancy started in 2020 at 201 East Germantown Pike. Of course, the old Sears stores, 2811 DeKalb Pike, the restaurant store went into there. And although it's not yet open, 1036 West Germantown Pike Creamery Tire is scheduled to be open, I believe, sometime in November. There are some other exciting things in 2020 that the Township was involved in. Our drive-through trunk retreat that the board mentioned earlier tonight. We also had the first-ever drive-in movies for the Township. If you were there, you saw that was kind of exciting, to see all the cars out in the field watching the 40-some-foot screen. Our concerts in the park were a big hit, even though there was socially distance dancing taking place. Because of COVID, we couldn't have our regular programs, our sports and recreation programs take place, so we did a number of virtual programs, including virtual yoga and kids' fitness. We also held a series of weekly Facebook contacts. They've actually started back up again, extremely popular with our residents. And we even did a series of wellness calls where our staff contacted seniors in the Township to make sure they were doing okay during COVID and to find out if there were any areas that we could help them with, areas of need. and to find out if there were any areas that we could help them with, areas of need. Just continuing with the 2020 highlights, we took possession of our second one-person leaf truck this year. If you have not seen it in use, you're welcome to go to our YouTube, the Township YouTube channel. And you can see a video there of the leaf truck in operation. As Mr. Sullivan mentioned earlier, we had a very successful road program this year. Which was, for us, which was a huge program compared to prior years and very successful. And everybody was happy to see that there was only one change order and a small one at that. If you've been in the building, you've noticed that we're doing massive lobby renovation. That's part of a multi-year program we, we enacted to, to work on many of the township facilities. And the lobby renovation is going along great and hopefully will be done in a short period of time. In addition to COVID, I think you can remember during the summer months that we had a number of storms that came through. So in addition to dealing with COVID, in addition to dealing with the road program, in addition to dealing with the lobby renovation, our public works crew ended up having to do a lot of storm damage repairs and removal of, of storm waste. And we also undertook a number of stormwater projects throughout the township for the year. These were projects that I, I won't say ignored over the years, but kind of had a lower priority. This year, the priority got raised and we had a number of successful programs there. Again, with the 2020 highlights, if you've, hopefully you've seen the pink police truck that's been out and about the township. The township also went through a reaccreditation, a successful reaccreditation. And there was virtual storytime with the police, where weekly, police officers would read stories to the kids in, in the township. Most recently, there was a pumpkin, pumpkin painting event. And then also earlier this year was the Viking of Cops. So it was kind of interesting that it was such a difficult year and a complicated year. But yet somehow the township, the township staff and the various departments were able to actually accomplish a lot. And there's still two months left in the year. So we'll see what happens then. So if we go on to the 2021 budget, what you see in front of you here is the proposed preliminary 2021 budget. Now, remember, this is the initial proposed budget. This is just our starting point. And it includes everything that's been requested by departments. And that's why we've got a number of these funds that are out of balance, the revenues versus the expenditures. What'll happen over the next few weeks is as we sit and meet and we start going through these in detail and we start creating a better prioritization list, we'll be able to narrow that gap. So at the November meeting, we should have those narrowed. And of course, at the December meeting, we'll have a balanced budget for you. You can see where, for example, our general fund, which is our operating fund, we call it the bricks and mortar, the lights fund, what keeps, what keeps the, you know, the lights on for all of our facilities and gets everybody paid. You know, currently, we've got revenues at 8.4 million and expenditures at 9.3. We've got a number of other funds that are already balanced. But if you jump down to our capital reserve fund, that's the eighth one on the list. You can see that we have revenue of $348,500 budgeted so far. But we've got close to a half a million dollars worth of capital purchase requests by departments. So that's another area where we'll have to be dealing with. The Highway 8 Fund is the same thing, because we've got a number of, of road program requests. And we'll be dealing with that as we move forward. So we've got 13 different funds that make up the entire township operation. And this is what we are going to be asking for approval to advertise, so that we can really get down to a brass tacks as we work with all the departments and get a balanced budget. Now, some of what's included in the 21, 2021 budget request at this point, road improvements. We, we talked about the successful 2020 program that we had. We want to build, build upon that and continue that into 2021. We have recently purchased a, a number of LED streetlights. You might remember a couple of years ago, the township took on responsibility for replacing streetlights. And we also decided that as part of the 2020 budget, we'd start a five-year plan of replacing all the neighborhood streetlights with LEDs. We just purchased a new supply of those, so we'll be getting started on that. And we'll continue that program. We'd like to continue that program in 2021. Traffic control, traffic maintenance has been an issue over the last few years. Where we purchased a number of traffic control devices and the departments would like to continue that. Mr. Chairman mentioned about park improvements. While we did not accomplish as many park improvements in 2020 as we would have hoped, primarily because of the, the COVID situation, we've got a number that have been requested for the 2021 budget. Also requesting new police vehicles, continued building renovations. There are lighting improvements that, that are, are requested for the township complex, the Stanford, Stanford Street Park complex. We're continuing our emphasis on renewables and sustainability. Remember, two years ago, the board approved proportions of the charging stations. They've been very, very popular with, with, with township residents and visitors and business people. We'd like to continue with renewables. And at this stage, there haven't been any requests for any new additional personnel in the 2021 budget. So as I said, the next steps coming up, we'll be meeting with department heads over the next few weeks and then presenting the budget to the board again at the November 17th meeting. We'll have management departmental meetings, again with, with department heads and then with individual supervisors to go through the budget request. And the goal is to get a balanced budget in front of the board of supervisors at the December 8th meeting. So what we're asking for tonight is board authorization to advertise the proposed budget. It'll be available for public inspection of the township building during the, the current hours of 9:00 to 3:00. And then that'll start our work progress towards the November 17th meeting. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions from the board? No. Okay. Then there's no questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve for advertising the budget, 2021 budget. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Chairwoman Capaletti. Is there any questions at all on the advertising or the budget at all? None being, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make one comment?
Yes.
Just, as Mr. Chris said, we, we, we have a lot of work to do on the budget. We're going to have many meetings. We've had several already with department heads. We'll be having many more in the coming weeks, between two and four and five weeks, the next five weeks, having many meetings. But our commitment to you, the board and the residents, to the residents of our township, is always the same, that we put together a fiscally responsible, but positive and balanced, a positive budget, balanced budget, with no tax increase every, every year that we can. We know we're never going to come to you and ask for a tax increase unless we have done everything we can in our abilities to avoid that. And to, but at the same time, we are committed and we commit to you and the residents of the township to not only keep our outstanding service to our residents, but to increase that service in every way we can. At the same time, providing the board with opportunities for critical investment in our infrastructure. So we keep home values high, keep our township, the residents that are in our township, keep them here, because we're building such a wonderful township, and attract new residents and new families to come here and enjoy all that East Norton has to offer. So that's our commitment to you, and stay tuned. We'll be bringing you a very positive and successful budget in the coming weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. And I'd like to say that, I'd like to congratulate you and the staff on presenting a budget that has no tax increase in this 2020 year of the COVID. It's just, I, I know, I've been reading a lot of the, the bulletins from the PZACs and some of the other township websites. And a lot of townships are struggling this year because of the, the revenues are down and costs are up. And it's, it just shows the, the position that East Norton is in, that we can, we can, we are able, and the staff is able, I should say, to present a budget with no tax increase. And like I said, I'd like to thank you and the staff for, for continuing to work on this, to try to trim it down as best you can, so that we don't have a burden on our residents for next year. Are there any comments from the, anybody else on the board?
I echo what you said, Mr. Chair. Just very grateful to have such an incredible staff that, that's willing to put so much diligence and work into creating a budget with no tax increase. It's been a difficult year for so many. So for them to know that, that this is one small thing we've been able to, you know, do for them and make sure that, that that's something that our township doesn't need in, in terms of a tax increase and that they're not going to have to face that little extra burden. It feels good to be able to be a part of that and to be able to share that. So thank you all for your hard work on that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll just make one comment, Mr. Chairman. I know the, the hour's getting late, we're going a long way. But I'll echo your sentiments and Vice Chair Capaletti. This, this is a, a great staff. We've managed in, in a difficult year to, like you say, keep us, keep us afloat and keep us going and, and not cut services. I mean, to actually improve services to the township. And, and that's, that's an amazing feat in and of itself. But to keep that momentum going, we're certainly true to our, our principles and what the, what the budget process is. Mr. Chris, you know, so eloquently put it, you know, our, our respect for residents and integrity and always looking out for the best that we can offer to ourselves, our, our neighbors and the businesses in the township too. So again, I'll just echo what you said and, and Mr. Hart. It's, it's been really a pleasure working with you guys and I look forward to it again next year.
Thank you, Mr. Givanas. Okay, next item on the agenda is the authorization to advertise an ordinance amending the East Norton Township zoning map to rezone a portion of the property located at 3, 3006 Kenwood Road from institutional to bedroom residential. I'd like to call on the township manager, Mr. Hart, to review this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is with great joy and satisfaction that we, we are here tonight with this action item. As you know, the, the St. Titus property at, on Kenwood Road has been a subject of much concern and much discussion, township meeting discussion, township resident discussion over the last several years, five to six to seven years. With, with a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of outreach, and some, some strong and positive work between township, the residents of, of the neighborhood, and quite frankly, the archdiocese and the attorneys. We are here tonight to ask you to authorize to advertise an ordinance amending the East Norton Township zoning map to rezone a portion of the St. Titus property located at 3006 Kenwood Road from institutional to BR1 residential. As you know, there were several potential users of this property, developers of this property in the past that had ideas for, for the use of the property that we felt, along with the residents, was absolutely inconsistent with the nature of the property, the nature of the neighborhood. It's very residential. It, it is, you, you wouldn't want any real business there. It is in, in, literally in the middle of a, of just a really nice bedroom community. And like I said, with, with a lot of negotiation, a lot of work, coming to you tonight to rezone this that will allow the archdiocese to market the property for home, you know, residential use is, is a real win-win and a, for win-win-win for the township, the township residents and the archdiocese. So tonight, in front of you is just the motion to advertise. We will come back at the next meeting for action. But I, I have to thank the board and, and honestly, some of the residents in the neighborhood are on this call right now. But your, your passion and, and commitment to this neighborhood and this property and making it a win for everybody involved, and, and giving us that mission and that freedom to go there and make those conversations and make that work happen is much appreciated. And I think the success is, is here on the page and something that will really change that neighborhood. And a lot of the fears that went on in that neighborhood will melt away. So thank you for that, and we ask you to authorize the advertisement tonight.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions on the item? Okay, none being, I'd like to make a motion then to authorize to advertise the ordinance amending the East Norton Township zoning map to rezone a portion of the property located at 3006 Kenwood Road from institutional to bedroom, BR1 residential. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Supervisor Givanas. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is something new that our accountants have asked us to do. And I will ask Mr. Hart to kind of review this a little bit before we read this out.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this is, this is really more of a change of style. In, in the past, expenditures were all incorporated into the financial reports. Discussion with finance, Mr. Chris, and, and several board members and our experts, we thought it was more prudent to put this as a line item each month. It creates transparency, it's easy to access, makes a lot more sense having to dig, dig through information. So going forward will be at the last action item each meeting. And it is basically just a motion to approve of that month's expenditures. So it's simple, it's a simple change, but we think it's important.
Okay, great. Any questions on the, on the item? All right, none being, I'd like to make a motion to approve the October 2020 expenditures in the amount of $464,473.61. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Chairwoman Capaletti. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, give me a minute here, I have to get to the scheduled meetings. Okay. All right, we have a short list this month. Tuesday, November 10th, 2020, at 7 o'clock will be the zoning hearing board meeting. And then Tuesday, November 17th, will be the Board of Supervisors meeting. Wednesday, November 18th is the Planning Commission meeting. Monday, November 23rd is the Historical Advisory Committee. Thursday, November 26th, the offices are closed for Thanksgiving. And Friday, November 27th, the offices close for the day after Thanksgiving. And then we'll continue the other items in December 8th when we have our Board of Supervisors meeting. Okay, I'd like to call on Mr. Hart to give his updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make this quick. As you know, as you mentioned earlier, we had the Halloween event where, you know, we, we had to think outside the box during COVID. And I want to thank our staff, from our senior staff to, our department heads, our senior staff, to, to every staff member. Really put in the time, put in the effort, did a great job, really think outs, think outside the box on, on all of our issues and our programs. Because we have to, and we, we know our residents not only deserve all these, the programs and events, but during COVID, I think it's more important than ever. It's a distraction, it's something else positive in their life that, that can really make a change in these tough times. So we did that trunk or treat drive-through. We are going to be doing something similar for Christmas, a holiday event. Stay tuned for information from that. We are working on putting that together now. And you know, And you know, if we go big or we don't go at all, so it's going to be a really positive event. So stay tuned for more information on that. Updating the website, just wanted to put it out there. We are doing a better job. We have put certain things in place where we have recordings of our meetings go on the website afterwards. Documentation during the meetings are on the website. We, a copy of the proposed budget and then the final budget will be placed on the website, posted on the website. So those documents and over time, it will become a more smooth process. But we are working towards that to make all of our information, as much as possible, easily accessible on our website. And lastly, we know the numbers of COVID numbers are higher, seem to be getting higher every day. We just encourage all the residents out there to stay safe, follow the guidelines and just look out for one another. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Is there any questions for the manager? No? Okay, none being, Mr. Chris, is there any citizens to be heard?
Mr. Chairman, we have one email received in the info@ email box. It is from Nick Marinelli and the comment is, will the budget be advertised online or only in person at the office? And I believe Mr. Hart just answered that question in his comments.
Yes. Thank you. No other questions? Any of the board? Do you have any questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Hart, do you have any other business?
We're good.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Chairwoman Capaletti. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Have a good month. I'll see you on the 17th.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.